Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special ceremony and meeting to name Lebanon as a Purple Heart City. Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer?
Here.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Here.
Mrs. Monroe?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Shoep?
Here.
Mr. Cope?
Here.
Mrs. Monroe?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
I'm good.
Now we present the Military Order of the Purple Heart.
Detail. Tit. Hup! Right shoulder. Hup! Carry flag. Hup! And a half step. Forward. Hup! Left. 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 Right left. Left. Right left. Left. Hadoulu. 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 Hadoulu.
Thank you, sir. And again, thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening on this very, very important occasion. I do know, standing right here, we do have a Purple Heart recipient. Thank you so much for being here. There may be others as well, but thank you, sir, very much. We are here this evening to very proudly pass a resolution number 2021-095. So can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I will read the resolution in type only. Whereas, chartered by an act of Congress in 1958 for combat wounded veterans, the Military Order of the Purple Heart is composed of men and women who received the Purple Heart Medal, which is awarded in the name of the President of the United States to members of the armed forces wounded in combat with an enemy force postmortemously to the next of kin of members in the armed forces killed in combat. And whereas, the Military Order of the Purple Heart Organization was formed in 1932 for the protection and mutual interest of all who have received the Combat Declaration, is composed exclusively of Purple Heart recipients and is the only congressionally-chartered Veterans Service Organization comprised strictly of combat veterans. And whereas, the Order of the Purple Heart for Military Merit, established by General George Washington during the Revolutionary War at Neumbourg, New York, August 7, 1982, is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use. And whereas, in recognition of this date and the estimated 1.7 million veterans since World War I who have been awarded this Medal of Honor, the mayor and the city council of the city of Lebanon desire to be among the first of many to become a Purple Heart City and to declare October 12, 2021, Purple Heart Day as a tribute to the service and sacrifices of our veterans and especially the valor of the extraordinary men and women who have earned the Purple Heart. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of, by the council in the city of Lebanon, Ohio, that the council of the city of Lebanon, Ohio hereby designates and proclaims the city of Lebanon, Ohio, a Purple Heart City. This resolution confirms the city's commitment to honor those who served and have served so faithfully in the events of our freedoms as Americans and gratefully acknowledge this sacrifice, bravery, and unwavering commitment as patriots. That this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Pass this 12th day of October, 2021. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cope?
Proudly, yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for being here. This is a very special and proud moment, and I would want to just say something about Councilmember Adam Matthews, who was instrumental in moving this along, and I appreciate your effort with this. We are very proud of this today and a community that is so very proud of all of our veterans, our Purple Heart recipients. We thank you for your service because what we can do today is because of all of you, the work that you have done to give us these freedoms that we possess. Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us. God bless our community, and God bless our country.
And if I may, it is an honor for us to be here this evening. As you pass the resolution to become part of the Purple Heart Trail, now declaring that you are officially a Purple Heart City, I'd like to take a moment just to introduce our honor guard. On my far right, we have Randy Hausen, who happens to be the current department commander for the Military Order of the Purple Heart for the Department of Ohio. Next to him, Charlie Toby, also a Purple Heart recipient, Vietnam veteran. To my left, Glenn West, who is also a Vietnam veteran. And to his left, Tyler Ogden, who is one of our, what we call Sandbox. He's Afghanistan, Iraq. And so we are proud to be here, to see all of you come out today to represent your city. And it warms our heart for us to be here, especially here at this memorial. I have a plaque here that I want to read that is going to be presented to the mayor. And this plaque represents the officialness of becoming a part of the Purple Heart Trail and making yourselves a Purple Heart City. The plaque reads as follows. "The Military Order of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to the city of Lebanon, Ohio, for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans, becoming a Purple Heart City." Presented by the patriot members of the Military Order of the Purple Heart and to the United States of America. We thank you. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
At this time, we have another piece of our ceremony relative to a coin presentation. And so, riflemen, pass your rifles. Hup! We have here a special item that is what we call a challenge coin. This coin is minted by the United States, and it represents the Military Order of the Purple Heart and the Department of Ohio. I would like to present the mayor with the first coin.
Thank you.
Detail. Present coins.
As with the ribbons that are on his hat, he is a Vietnam vet. I am also a Vietnam vet, as I pointed out, the rest of it except for Tyler. It was a bad time for us back then, but we did what was necessary and we did what we wanted to do. And so, sir, I say thank you for your service and your sacrifice while you were in uniform. I salute you, sir.
Good evening, and welcome to our Lebanon City Council meeting, October 12, 2021. Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Here.
Mrs. Monroe?
Here.
Mr. Shoep?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Cope?
Here.
Please stand for our color guard.
Order and cut. Order. Arf. Color guard. Colors. Color turn. Color guard. All. Harry. Others. Present. Others.
Politic allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Harry. Others. Order. Others. Order. Arf.
Good and gracious God, thank you for bringing us together today on this beautiful October evening. Bless all of those that have started harvest over the last time, all of those that bring food to our table, that provide for the logistics, that make our lives possible. On this special day in Lebanon where we recognize the completion of our new jail and pass the resolution to become a Purple Heart City, help us keep in mind, please bless all of those that domestically provide for law and order and around the world protect our national defense. Protect us in our daily lives. Bless all of those that we encounter. Help us to be the avenue for grace, the outpouring of love to everyone that we come in contact with. Inspire us tonight. Give us your wisdom. You've entrusted us for a definite purpose as we guide Lebanon here tonight. Please help us to do your will in this and all the big and small things we may do. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
If councilor can consider regular meeting minutes, September 28, 2021, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Obstand.
Shoep?
Yes.
In consideration of work session meeting minutes, October 5, 2021, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
All right, and I'd first like to thank our Lebanon color guard for being here. Very, very important. And on behalf of city council, thank everyone for us so very much. We really appreciate that, and we thank them for what they do. All right, we have a few visitors this evening, so I'll call up Veronica first.
I'm sorry.
Veronica? Yeah.
Sorry, that was my response. Thank you so much, and I want to thank you guys for hearing me this evening. Adam Matthews, good to see you again. Saw you last night in Mason. For those of you who didn't know, Mr. Adam Matthews was protesting the Mason meeting, counter-protesting the Mason meeting. So not quite nonpartisan or whatever, but that's cool. It's actually interesting because this is the second meeting that I've heard you promote as sanctuary city ordinance at a different city council. One was in a different state. But you've managed to miss three council meetings here and, I'm sorry, two council meetings and three work sessions here. So it's good to see you here tonight. Thank you. I was at the ceremony for the Purple Hearts, and I am an OEF vet. It's not something I talk about often, but I am an Afghanistan vet. I have seen combat, and I am female, obviously. So what does that mean? It means that for female veterans, and I do not want to take away from the Purple Heart recipients that were there this evening, the ceremony was lovely, and I have the most respect for the Purple Heart recipients that were there and all veterans, but I don't think you guys fully understand the impact of the ordinances and the resolutions that you guys are making. I am a female veteran. I, there's a lot of stigma that comes around with being a female veteran, and I can go to the VA, and people will assume that I'm there escorting my husband or father. I can go get my free dinner on Veterans Day, and I've been told, I'm sorry, it's for veterans only, assuming I'm not a veteran. Your abortion ban has done just that, further stigmatized women, women that are veterans. When I came back from Afghanistan, I got out of the military about 25 days after I came back from Afghanistan. It was extremely difficult reintegrating back in society, and I had about three months where I did not have medical insurance. And I received my medical care at Planned Parenthood. And the statements that this council and these residents have made about Planned Parenthood further stigmatizes women and women veterans, myself. To call me a baby killer, to call me moolah because I believe a different way than you is atrocious. And I've been called a baby killer on both sides of the aisle, on the left and on the right. It's wholly offensive, wholly offensive, and it negates my service to this country. And I don't think that you guys are really looking at how each individual feels, how people who don't believe like you feel. Because when I saw that you guys were doing that ceremony, I was touched and I felt warm inside, and then I cried. Because I don't feel like you guys understand what veterans need, let alone female veterans. We need medical care. We need bodily autonomy. We need to be able to make our own decisions for ourselves because we have also put our lives on the line for this country. I'm not angry. I feel like there's some misguidedness, but I'm passionate because this means a lot to me. This means a lot for my children. This means a lot for my family. And I have a whole line of Purple Heart recipients in my family. My whole family has served in the military. I was the first female in my family to serve in the military. I made sergeant within my first and only enlistment. And I feel completely and utterly disrespected by every single one of you up here, every single one of you. Birth and name calling? Me, you guys called a female veteran a baby killer. You guys did that. And I'm told to stand up here and be kind and be nice when it's not reciprocated at all.
Make your final comment, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. My other final comment is, I've noticed that you guys put resident and non-resident in the meeting minutes, and I am part of this community. I have a Lebanon address, even though I live in Clear Creek Township. My children go to Lebanon City Schools. I use the post office in Lebanon. I shop at Lebanon businesses. My voice matters, and I will continue to come here and share my voice, whether you guys agree or not.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Zach Bowles.
Mayor, I would move that we make sure we hold to orders, the rules of this council, especially that we do not name call or we call out specifically by name members of the council, and that we hold to the time limits that we've deemed appropriate for this body.
Thank you.
That is insurrection. It's a challenge point. Insurrection. That is a challenge point for the Purple Heart recipients. Fucking bullshit.
Zach Bowles, welcome.
My hello, everyone. Sorry about my voice. Lost it over the weekend. I'm Zach Bowles. I live at 446 Deerfield Road. I just want to go out and look at all you guys and say thank you for everything you've done for our city, looking at how Oktoberfest went over the weekend. I heard there were a ton of people there. I unfortunately wasn't able to make it, but good job, you guys. Thank you. Thank you, everybody up here. God bless you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Beckman.
Good evening, council. My name is Josh Beckman. I live at 422 Lakefront Drive here in Lebanon. Just want to say thank you as well. I want to echo off of what Zach had recently just said. You are really chosen here for a reason, and that is to serve your constituents, and I am your constituent, and everyone in Lebanon is your constituent, and you have done a great job throughout your years of service. So thank you so much. I'm sorry that you had to hear, unfortunately, some vulgarity during a council meeting. It's really not appropriate, but I will just say that the overall residents do value your support for us, and I just value your time in coming here and listening to all of your constituents, whether they agree with you or whether they disagree with you. And I just appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. I do not believe we have any more visitors this evening, so we're going to move on to regular items. And Mr. Braca, we, in passing number one, we've already taken care of that.
Correct.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and move to number two. Ordinance number 2021-096.
Ordinance number 2021-096, approving a new bargaining unit agreement with AFSCME, which stands for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, for the Streets, Parks, and Auto Maintenance Division employees, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Braca.
This ordinance accepts the collective bargaining agreement with AFSCME, effective through December 31, 2023, which includes non-wage-related amendments to the agreement. The wage amendments had been previously approved by city council in 2020.
All right. Thank you. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Sir, a second.
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes. Number three, ordinance number 2021-097.
Ordinance number 2021-097, approving an economic development agreement with EPC Incorporated to support the expansion of their facility at 315 Southwest Street, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Braca.
This ordinance approves an economic development agreement with EPC Columbia LLC in support of their expansion, which will result in the retention of current jobs and the creation of new jobs within the city. The economic development agreement does spell out a CRA tax incentive, which is a buy-right incentive within that district, as well as a kilowatt-hour tax credit that's subject to them actually hitting their new job creation targets.
All right. Thank you. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion or comment?
That's five-year, right, Scott?
Yes.
Yep.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Number four, ordinance number 2021-098.
Ordinance number 2021-098, approving the final plat for Autumn Ridge Section 2-A, creating 15 single-family residential lots, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Braca.
This ordinance approves the final plat of Autumn Ridge Section 2-A, as recommended by the planning commission. This will create 15 new single-family residential lots.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Number five, ordinance number 2021-099.
Ordinance number 2021-099, authorizing a change order to the new street reconstruction project, adding the replacement of a section of water main on North Broadway Avenue to the project, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Braca.
This ordinance authorizes a change order for additional water main replacement on North Broadway due to its age and poor condition. The additional work can be performed within the currently budgeted funds, and it will be incorporated into the new street construction project. We estimate the change order to be at approximately $320,000.
All right. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
This ordinance authorizes a change order for additional water main replacement on North Broadway due to its age and poor condition. The additional work can be performed within the currently budgeted funds. It will be incorporated into the new street construction project. We estimate the change order to be at approximately $320,000.
All right. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. I believe I heard a second.
Either way.
I'll take a second.
Okay. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Kope?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Number six, ordinance number 2021-100.
Ordinance number 2021-100 establishing the charging rate for the city's EV charging station.
Mr. Brunka?
This ordinance establishes the rates for the city's new electric vehicle charging station, which we located in the parking lot of the corner of Sycamore and Main Street.
And a motion for a first reading.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Number seven, ordinance number 2021-101.
Ordinance number 2021-101 authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the master services agreement with American Municipal Power, or AMP, to allow the city to participate in the 2022 EcoSmart Choice Program.
And Mr. Brunka?
This ordinance authorizes the city to participate in the AMP 2022 EcoSmart Program, which is a free voluntary green pricing program available to AMP member municipal electric utilities, which helps stimulate renewable energy project development. So essentially, our businesses have the option voluntarily to opt into paying an additional fee for their electric consumption, to source that through AMP from renewable sources. So it allows them to meet some corporate requirements in terms of renewable energy or if they would just voluntarily like to have that as part of their power portfolio. It gives us the ability to offer that to them.
All right, thank you. And a motion for a first reading.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And we will see this at our next scheduled meeting. So Mr. Brunka, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of city council is a work session on Monday, October 18th, at 7:00 PM. Do you want to kind of put out there, save the date? We are planning on a ribbon cutting for our new fire station. Right now, it's scheduled for November 18th at 10:00 AM. Definitely more details to follow, but we are still on track with that project. Payment went down today and we're looking forward to getting moved in there shortly. So November 18th at 10:00 AM and again, we'll definitely get more information out on that. I did want to also pass along, the developers indicated that they're going to be starting construction on the commercial buildings at 511 North Broadway by the end of this month. So they're getting ready to move into the next phase, which would support the actual restaurants. They're going to be going in front of that development along Broadway. So that was good news. And I did want to update council. So we are working on a state capital budget grant for the railroad bridge replacement. So that's moving along. And I also did want to get some direction from city council. Typically, we will submit two projects as part of this process. If we're lucky, both get funded. We always like to have a backup. One project that staff would recommend that we also pursue as part of this process is the expansion of the city-owned parking lot that's adjacent to the Lebanon Theater Company. There's a portion of that that's gravel right now. Parking can definitely be a challenge downtown in general during certain days of the week. And we see an opportunity to potentially secure funding to expand that parking lot. So if council is okay with that, staff would go ahead and put in a grant application for that as well.
Sounds good.
That'd be great. So I have a question. Is there a diminished chance, so there would be three grants that we would apply for, and is there a diminished chance of getting any of them? If you do three rather than two or what, how does that flow?
So it'd be two grants. So the one grant would be for Railroad Bridge 4.10. And then this would be the second project that we would submit. What we've done in the past is prioritize what's the most important for the city, kind of what's secondary. So we would make it clear to the grant review committee that the railroad bridge is our priority project. And if only one is to get funded, that would be the one that we would want.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And no executive session?
That's correct.
So discussion items. Counselor, could you anything this evening?
No.
Counselor Schaefer, anything this evening?
Playoffs for the Lebanon Warrior Youth Football League start this weekend. Representing for my third grader. Excited for that and just want to thank council member Matthews for his work on the Purple Heart City. It's really cool. And so I saw the red, red doors on the firehouse and I was like, man, that is so firehouse looking. The other one doesn't, doesn't so much look like one, but that's like the,
That's awesome.
When you're thinking firehouse, that's, you know, that's what we've got now. And I'm excited to see the progression of that, that development there. 511, that's, that's going up quick. Lots of progress there. So much construction going on. And I know with mowing, you know, we're gearing up for winter time and, you know, things to slow down, but you know, around town, there's still lots of exciting stuff going on. And anyway, that's it.
Counselor Shope, anything?
I would just like to say that even though the young lady that spoke earlier said that she wasn't angry, I think we all can realize that there is anger in our city. And it's not peculiar to the city of Lebanon. It's our country and our world that we live in. And many people will say they're not angry or they're not offended or they're not, but their actions betray the reality oftentimes. I think, you know, it's important for us to try to understand the best that we can. Even though we can't ever perfectly understand someone else, we can do our best. We can ask for God's help to do better at that. And pray that, you know, God's peace will be granted to each and every one. And that's, that's what I'm doing. My goal. That's my goal. That's all. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Councilmember Matthews?
I have a rundown of some good news of things. Wanted to say congratulations to the chamber on having a great awards ceremony. All of the winners, all of the nominations and our own mayor winning their award for, for all of her work. That's fantastic. It is great how well the city and the chamber can work together. And it was a great event and thank you for that. Congratulations to the commissioners here in our town with the ribbon cutting for the sheriff's office and the jail on time and under budget is really nice. And it's, I'd love a world where we don't need that, as the president, Dave Young, said. But we have it and one of the first obligations of a government is to protect its citizens. And so that was great. And later this week, I believe, or next week, the Warren County Foundation will be recognizing Sheriff Sims for his, his work. I want to thank you through the chairs, the councilman Schaefer and all the others for the Purple Heart comments, but thank you so much to staff for making that happen. Having the sign ready to go, having everything there, working with Veterans Affairs was wonderful. So thank you, staff, for that. Kiwanis has their 5K and pancake breakfast this weekend. And I've seen on social media, Halloween trick or treat is Sunday night. I believe 5:30, 7:30, 5:30, 7:30. But if that's not enough, the merchants the day before on Saturday are having merchants trick or treat throughout town. So there is many times to dress up and have fun, but Lebanon does it on Halloween. So.
And I'll just, so you commented about a lot of great things that have gone on today and this week and last week. So something that's coming up in about a month is Girls Night Out, which is Saturday, November 13th. So put that on your radar. It's so much fun. It's 4:00 to 9:00 PM in downtown Lebanon. There's all, they're planning all kinds of cool store freebies, deals. There's a $5 VIP bag. There's a, you know, raffle prizes. There's like a $500 grand prize bundle. I mean, it's crazy. There's a donation component to it this time around, which is really cool. So more on that, but it is November the 13th. So put that on your radar.
All right, and I would like to say this past weekend with Oktoberfest, a huge shout out to Casey Burda with, with our city, just Parks and Recreation. How authentic, so much more authentic Oktoberfest was with, you know, the traditional foods and the ceremonies and heritage and great turnout and people on the streets. Lots of laughter and smiles. It was just, it was just a lot of fun. And the importance of all the volunteer hours that are put into that. There were a lot of them. And please pass one day to Casey, how great that was. And I would just say, as, as we try to bring up people to, to speak, we listen. We try to listen. At times, we've taken abuse. It's okay. But again, I go back and councilmember Kope, you said this and it led to you, councilmember Shope, that there, there is a limit to what our roles are. And as evidenced by a meeting in another community last night, it's not happening in our city. It's not happening in our council chambers. We need to make sure that when we communicate with one another, we are doing it in a respectful way. It's not that hard to do that. We all have a different perspective. Some of you are angry with what some of the decisions we have made. Okay, I own that. Some of you are pleased with the decisions we have made, same way. But profanity and yelling, calling out people, being sarcastic is just not what we're going to tolerate. We are examples. We've got a child in the room. I believe we should be adult examples and role models of how to act. How to act. And if you don't like that, watch it on television, watch it through social media, bashes on social media if you need to do that. But in these chambers, we're going to be respectful and responsible adults. We're here to make decisions, not all, that people are always happy with. So with that, I entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yep.
Shope?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Kope?
Yes.
Thank you for joining our meeting, October 12th, 2021. Look forward to seeing you at our next scheduled meeting. Have a good one.